Right, I'm gonna ring Marston's... ...um, bailiffs. They're saying that I owe... ...a bus lane fine again. And I think they're going to try and steal my car off me again. But I'm going to ring them. Just to... I'm gonna ring them. Just to see what they say.
Welcome to Marston. If you have one of our letters, you'll get quick access to your case details and the ability to manage payments, payment plans, and our customer support services. Download our app from the Apple Play Store now. Just search "Marston App". So we can help you as quickly as possible. We now need your reference number, which can be found at the top of any letters we've sent you. If you don't have your reference number or if you're not an account holder, please press 1. Otherwise, please hold. If your reference number starts with a letter, press 1. Otherwise, please hold.
Let's see what we've got to say.
Please enter your reference number by hash. Thank you. The number you entered is... Is this correct? To confirm, press 1. To re-enter the number, please press 2. If your reference number starts with a letter, press 1. Otherwise, please hold. If your reference number starts with the letter A, press 1. If it starts with B, it's 2. For C, it's 3. For H, it's 4. For anything else, it's 5. Please enter your reference number by hash.
Reference number... 2, 2, 7, 8.
Thank you. The number you entered is... 8, 4, 6, 9, 2, 2, 7, 0. Is this correct? To confirm, press 1. To re-enter the number, I'm sorry, but we don't recognise the reference number you've entered. Please try again. If your reference number starts with a letter, press 1. Otherwise, please... If your reference number starts with the letter A, press 1. If it starts with B, it's 2. For C, it's 3. For H, it's 4. For anything else, it's 5. Please enter your reference number by hash. Thank you. The number you entered is... 8, 4, 6, 9, 2, 2, 7, 0. Is this correct? To confirm, press 1. To re-enter the number, please press 2. If your reference number starts with a letter, press 1. Otherwise, please hold. If your reference number starts with the letter A, press 1. If it starts with B, it's 2. For C, it's 3. For H, it's... Please enter just the numerics from your reference number in order, and then press hash. For example, if... The number you entered is... C, 0, 5, 7, 4, 3, 5. Is this correct? To confirm, press 1. To re-enter the number, please... Make an automated payment, press 1. Alternatively, please hold. In order to maintain high levels of security on your account, we're going to ask you up to three questions. Please enter the numerical digits from your house or flat number in the order they appear. For example, if you live at number 12 Springfield Avenue, enter 1 and 2, followed by hash. Please enter the numerical digits in the order they appear from your postcode. For example, if your postcode is N112LP, enter 112, followed by hash.
Right, so it's... 12... 2...
Please enter the numerical digits in the order they appear from your client case reference number. This number can be found on any letters we've sent to you in the past.
8, 4, 6, 9, 2, 2, 7, 8, hash.
If you're according to clear balance or make a payment plan instalment, press 1. Otherwise, please hold. If you want a payment plan or to amend an existing one, press 1. Otherwise, please hold.
I'm holding.
Thank you. We will get you to a member of our team just as quickly as we can. In order to provide the best possible service, our crews have recorded the training, monitoring, and analytical processes.
And these are all purposes. Ref... reference number. Is that a client's reference number or the... reference number... Oh, yeah, uh... It's... C O 5 7 4 3 5. Can I take my name? Yeah, it's Gary. Sorry? Oh, Davis. No. No. Nothing to do with you. I don't... I... What... What do you mean? I owe 300 and... Whatever pounds. What do I owe that for? So that's... I've been... I've been fined? Right, and who's fined me? Right, well, um, does... Do you operate in... In... In accordance with the British law? Right, it says in the English Bill of Rights, it's 1869, section 12, it states, "Any fines or forfeitures which are not given in the court by a judge or illegal and void." It hasn't gone through a magistrate's court. It's gone through, um, a bolt centre. Northampton Bolt Centre. And it's not a court. It's a... It's just an office that's rubber stamping it. Because what you're actually doing, you're committing fraud and deception and you're getting away with it with the government. Because you said you worked in accordance with the law. And in the English Bill of Rights, as I stated, it says that only a judge in a court could give me a... A fine. And you've just told me I've been fined in a magistrate's court, which I haven't because I have not been to court. I've not been given any court summons and I'm not a patron court. And for... For me to be fined by a judge, I have to appear in court. And I have... I've had no paperwork. I've had nothing. Well, you are in a conversation with me because that's why I've rung you to tell you that you're committing fraud and deception. No, I'm ringing because you're gonna come round and you're gonna try and... You stole my car before over a bus lane fine and I got it back. Because I told you, it says in the English Bill of Rights, 1689, section 12, it states, "Any fines or forfeitures which are not given in the court by a judge or illegal and void." So I'm ringing you to tell you that if you come round and try and steal my car, there's going to be problems. I don't have to pay anything. I haven't been fined. Leeds City Council can't dish out fines. They're not the law. They don't own the roads. With, you know, the government paid them to maintain the roads. They don't pay them to put up private bus lanes for private corporations and then charge and put up cameras which are on the land registry, which is a bit unreal. So, and then you're sending me threatening letters saying that you're gonna come round and steal my property. Yeah, I'd like to speak to someone who's legally trained, if I possibly can, because, you know, I take this letter as a threat. And if someone comes round and steals my car, I promise you that I'm gonna stab him in the head. Okay, thank you very much, pal, yeah. See you afterwards then. Hello?
Good afternoon. Could you tell me if you just can say your full name for me?
Can you... Can you give me your full name?
Yes, my name's Tony.
Well, my name's Gary. I don't have an account with you. Yes. That very nice guy he was. Yeah, you committed fraud and deception, yeah. Do you... Are you legally trained? So you just... You just... You just follow instructions for Leeds City Council then? You're just following instructions from Leeds City Council? Well, I... I don't owe any money. I've not been fined. I've not been to court. Right, and you say that I've had a bus lane fine and a parking fine. And now it's escalated to 300 and odd quid. And then you're gonna charge me money to come round and an enforcement agent's gonna charge me another 225 pounds and then, uh, a further minimum 110 pound fee. Are you... Are you on drugs or something? You can't... You can't do that to people. All right. It's... Well, just let me tell you a little story. Um, I was a man that worked out how to beat the parking fines in the bus lane tickets and you're trying to make an example of me. And I think, uh, not the... Not last September, but the September before, you sent an enforcement agent round and you stole my car off me. And the police got involved and I got dragged out of my car and I got a kicking and they helped steal my car. And you had hold of it for six months and then you dumped it round the corner from me and you've... Whilst you had it, you were driving it. You stole all my stuff out of it and you damaged it. And you owe me a lot of money, well Leeds City Council do. So, I want to know is, I didn't pay them bus lane fines, right? Which they say that I got, which I didn't get and I'd never been to court. Because Leeds City Council can't dish out fines. They're not the law. All right, they're working in accordance with the government, but they're not obeying by the law. Because it states in the English Bill of Rights, 1689, it states, "Any fines or forfeitures which are not given in the court by a judge or illegal and void." And now I got my car back. I got my car back by the Magna Carta 1214, section 20. It states that no sheriff or man can take a freeman's horse or car without his consent. So I've actually beat you, right? And there's not many people that beat you and get the vehicles back, right? And what I want to know is, are you going to do the same again? Are you going to come round and steal my car again? And we're going to go through it all again? Because as far as I'm concerned, my claim's going in soon. And Marston's, you were supposed to look after my car and the police smashed the window and it was outside. And I needed all new upholstery. You were driving it when you had it and the clutches went and you stole all my belongings out of it. And I got it back and now I'm gonna get my revenge and get my remedy. So what I want to know is, what are you going to do? Because I don't owe you any money. And if anybody comes round to my house threatening to do anything to me, I promise you, the shit is going to hit the fan. I'm not threatening anybody. I'm just... I'm just being straight with you. Because I ain't getting fucking robbed off... Don't take this personally because it's not personally against you. It's against the Leeds City Council and Marston's fucking robbing, stealing bastards. So, excuse my French. But you're not coming round here and stealing my car again because I'll just have to get it back again. And then I'm gonna make a... I'm gonna make a right stink. I'm gonna have it all over internet. Because I've been keeping quiet about this for time being. But you can't go around stealing people's cars off them that they're paid for with their own money because they owe bus lane fines and council tax and whatever. You know, that's theft. If you did... If they... If I did that, I'd go to prison. But old Tom Rideon or Ridon or Leeds City Council are thieving, robbing bastard. He's doing this every day. And he's not just stealing cars. He's stealing children as well. So I want to know, what are you gonna do about it? Are you going to carry on and help Leeds City Council and steal my car and get yourself in loads of shit? And I'm gonna get my car back again and then I'm gonna make it... Then I'm gonna make it... Well, I'm gonna tell everybody. I'm gonna sing it from the trees. You don't have any power. You don't have anything. Whoever comes round to steal my car, I'm gonna make a citizen's arrest on them for fraud and deception. And believe me, I've got all the case law to back me up as well. I ain't messing around now. I'm telling you, send this back to Leeds City Council and tell them to stick it and you don't want now to do with it. Because if you come round to my house, there's gonna be fucking hell on to pay. Because you've done tried... You've done it all well. You've done it once already. You should check your records. I've already beat you once and got my car back. And if you're gonna go down the same path again, then I'm gonna start going and start blaring it all over internet. So I'm just... What I'm telling you because I'm doing this with clean hands and I just want to know what... 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 What you have to do because you've been told what you have to say and what you have to do, haven't you? Yeah, but I don't owe any money. Why would... Why would I give you something that I don't owe? Why would I give you something that's... That is... It's illegal? Well, I've told you that if an agent comes round here, then I'm gonna make a citizen's arrest on him. You know, I've got all the... I've got all the case law that I need to beat you. I beat you before because there's not many people that get the car back from you. You know that, don't you? I don't think you'll know anybody because I don't. So that's a pretty big win. And, you know, if I can do it, then I can do it for everybody else. So if I start telling everybody else, because all them cars you've got locked up up at your lockup at the DVLA car park that you say is a DVLA car park. But I'm gonna round the DVLA. The DVLA says, "We don't have a car park in Leeds. Its nearest one's Manchester." So that's fraud and deception as well. I don't need little representation. I've already beat you back and got my car back. Why would I... What a solicitor... A solicitor is a whore. Someone you pay to fuck. Well, I ain't getting fucked by a solicitor. You know what I mean? I can do it myself. I'm a... I'm an intelligent man. I've already beat you. So if you look on your records, you know, if I was you, I'd send this back because it's just gonna cause you a hell of a load... Load of shit. Because I ain't having it... Anyone coming round and stealing my car again. Police won't get involved again. Well, I'm telling you that if you come round to my house and I'm gonna make a citizen's arrest and whoever comes round to my house. And I'm gonna make it. I'm gonna film it. No, I'm not. I'm not paying it. I'm... I'm... I'm not refusing to pay it. I can afford to pay it. I'm just not paying it because it's... It... No, I'm not... I'm sick of being robbed all the time by a Leeds City Council. I know... I know you're only doing your job, but if you're saying that you can't help me and I've tried to be... You know, I've been civil with you, haven't I? I've tried to, you know, tell you what... Yeah, I've tried to tell you it from my point of view and I've told you that I've already beat it. And you just... You've just paid... You just do what you're told, don't you? You do as they tell you to do. You're an employee. Yeah. Well, all right then, I'm gonna get off, pal. If you could put that on record, I've just rung and, you know, if you possibly can. And otherwise, you know, I've... I've said what I've gonna say and I'm gonna do what I'm gonna do. Okay, you have a nice day, pal. Thank you. Bye. She's a baby girl. She's a baby girl. She wants to go with us. Does she want to go with us? The poo-poo's. Does she want to go with us? And poo-poo. And poo poo.